Good evening and thank you for joining us for the July, or sorry, June 11th, 2012 Board of Education meeting. We have a great cast of characters in the audience, so I look forward to moving forward to that. In accordance with the Open Public Records Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 7th, 2012, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
If I can have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood, please.
Mr. Kins.
Ms. Boglczewski?
Here.
Ms. Antifante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Soisan?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
Okay, following the agenda, we have correspondence as noted in the agenda that was provided, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of my favorite board meetings of the year, a time when we recognize all of the wonderful staff members who have worked for us for so many years and are now retiring and beginning a new phase of their life. It's also a time that we recognize our Teachers of the Year, as well as our board members who have served on this board. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce, let's go with Mary Ann Malady from Amsterdam School, who will introduce her Teacher of the Year, Liv Bowery. Let's give Mary Ann a round of applause.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Ms. Bowery can't be with us this evening, but it's with great pride and excitement that I announce the Amsterdam School's Teacher of the Year as Liv Bowery. Ms. Bowery has been servicing the students of Amsterdam School in an exemplary manner for the past 10 years. During the course of that time, excellence has been her name. She began her teaching career as a student teacher right here at Amsterdam School. Once we saw her in action, it was clear she needed a permanent home here. Since then, her role has been of a 4th grade teacher, a full-time 4th grade inclusion teacher, and the writing teacher at Amsterdam School. Ms. Bowery demonstrates excellence by receiving many honors and awards during her career, including the Peter Wood Creative Writing Award, the Joseph Bercher Award for Excellence in Urban Education, the Masters Program Award for Exemplary Portfolio, the Allemirck Science Teaching Award in Recognition of Implementing Inquiry-Based Science in the Classroom. She was also nominated for a Fellowship in Inclusion Education. Watching Liv in an instructional setting is like watching Picasso creating a great work of art. The depth of her knowledge and her instruction is admirable and clearly evident. Even more evident is her request and love for children. Each child is viewed as a priceless treasure deserving all of her efforts and attention. She is a child's teacher in the true sense of the word. She sees every student as an individual and creates instruction to meet that child's needs. She carefully modifies and supports instructions so all students can be successful. One of her peers described her in this manner: "Liv Bowery has been a literary mentor for me. Liv's guidance and ideas really help me ensure that all of my students are getting the most out of our reading and writing time. Literacy instruction is dynamic, students are excited about the work that they are doing, and we have a clear understanding of every student's strengths and weaknesses. What an exemplary teacher and model for everyone. I can think of no one more deserving of this award.
Unfortunately, Liv couldn't be here this evening, but we wish her all the very best. Next, Mr. Carey, Principal of Aris Intermediate School, will introduce Susan Herndon. I'm sorry, Steve Carrigan is in place of Mr. Carey this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. And yes, I am in place of Mr. Carey this evening. I'd like to begin by extending a congratulations to the entire Teacher of the Year Award winners, all of them throughout the district. Aris is proud to have Mrs. Susan Herndon as its Teacher of the Year for 2012. Sue, please come on up. Prior to her arrival in Hillsborough Public Schools in 2001, Mrs. Herndon worked for seven years as a public school teacher in Maryland. Since arriving in Hillsborough, Mrs. Herndon has worked in grades 4, 5, and 6 as a classroom teacher, and since 2006, has been an academic support instruction teacher in both grades 5 and 6, as well as being Aris's school's reading content specialist. Many, 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 many people had nice things to say about you, Sue. In the words of her colleagues, "Mrs. Herndon is a kind and engaging teacher, volunteers her time to help students outside of the class as well as during the school day, has mentored many students over her teaching career, is compassionate, and is a caring person who loves her job." A few of her many contributions to Otten Road include being evaluated and longstanding member of Otten Road's Intervention and Referral Services Committee, coordinator of our 6th grade annual trip to McCarter Theater in Princeton, New Jersey, and she has also planned and coordinated our first annual 5th grade class trip this year. On behalf of the entire Otten Road Intermediate School family, we congratulate Mrs. Herndon for receiving this very deserving award. Thank you, Sue, for all you do and for inspiring each of us.
Principals, we do also have some gifts for our Teachers of the Year, as well as for our retirees, so they're actually listed on this front desk if anybody has a chance. So Steve, I believe Susan's awards are there as well. Congratulations, Susan. Next is Mr. Vulpie, Principal of HES, and he will be introducing Mrs. Kate Marr. Mr. Vulpie.
Good evening, and before I talk about my Teacher of the Year, if I could just take a moment to, I just want to recognize Triangle's Teacher of the Year, too, Ms. Renee Myers. She was my son's 3rd grade teacher and has just as much to do with the young man he is today as I feel that I do, so Ms. Myers, just a little extra pat on the back to you there. Now for who I'm really here to talk about, Ms. Marr, can you come up? She doesn't want to come up, but I'm going to force her to come up here. For those of you who don't know Mrs. Marr, she's been in the district for four years now, five, for four years right now, and she's been at Hillsborough Elementary School for three years. She is the teacher in charge of the Language Learning and Behavioral Disabilities Class at Hillsborough Elementary School. To make a long story short, what does Mrs. Marr do every day? Mrs. Marr deals with the children who can't be dealt anywhere else within the district. The program that Mrs. Marr runs actually is what we would have normally put children into outside district placements for, costing the Board of Education anywhere between $20,000 to $40,000 a student. Mrs. Marr takes on these children and makes a huge difference in their lives. I've said this to Kate on many occasions, Kate does not have every single skill set that every other teacher does, but I have not encountered any teacher in my career who has all of the skills that Kate Marr does. During the course of the day, and I can give you an example from last year, in last year's class, she taught preschool, kindergarten, TP, 1st, and 2nd grade, all on the grade level, all within one classroom during the course of the day. In addition to academic instruction, Mrs. Marr, I don't want to point this out too much, she's gotten a couple of black eyes here and there, she has gotten kicked, punched, bitten, but it's all because we recognize that we have students who have some kind of behavioral disability, and she's the one willing to deal with them. Her first year in the district, without going into too much detail, Lenore, is Lenore here? Can I make fun of her? She's not here? Okay. Lenore Johnston came to me and said, "I have this great teacher and this great idea for this behavioral program, and the teacher's going to come in with all the ideas and she's going to help you out." I'm like, "Great." So I meet Kate for the first time, and Kate sits down, "Oh, I'm so excited to work with you, Mike. Lenore told me you have all the great ideas for this great behavioral program that we're going to have in there." We kind of look at each other, and we took the next step from there. And where are we today? We're very successful. Mrs. Marr is very successful, and it's because of the perseverance that she goes through, whether it is excellent instruction, hosting potluck dinners and parent support groups after school, whether it's handing out hugs, dealing with a child in a tantrum, Mrs. Marr does it all. She does it with a smile on her face, and she does it in a professional manner. When I say that in all my years of education, I don't know anyone else who could do the job that Mrs. Marr does, or who wants to do it for that matter, I am not exaggerating. Kate, you're an inspiration to your students, to your parents, and I thank you for what you do every day. Congratulations.
Next is Dr. Trabolski, Principal of Hillsborough Middle School, and I'll introduce Mr. Robert Gill.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. It's a pleasure to recognize Robert Gill, a Hillsborough Middle School 8th grade science teacher, as our Teacher of the Year. Bob began his teaching career at Hillsborough Middle School in 1980, shortly after graduating from Rutgers. Over the past 32 years, he's taught a number of interdisciplinary subjects in addition to science, including the Humanities Course, which was an integration of literacy and social studies and thematic units at the time. Throughout his career, Bob has been a leading advocate of the middle school design and a champion for adolescent students, ensuring that our school has never lost its mission to be child-centered and encourage integration of content across the curriculum. His work in the classroom and for the betterment of Hillsborough Middle School has always been a labor of love for education. Now, in Bob's classroom, you'll always find students immersed in activities that are relevant to their lives and that inspire innovation and creativity. It would not be atypical, towards the end of May, to find Bob on the roof of our school heaving science projects off the roof, to the delight of the science students below who had engineered a device to protect an egg from the G-forces and the force of impact of that fall from the roof. Bob knows that the art of teaching lies not merely in challenging students to do their best, but to ensure that they love the challenge all the way. As an instructional leader at HMS, Bob has served on numerous advisory committees, curriculum development committees, he's mentored new teachers and lots of students alike. For the past 16 years, he's been the advisor to one of the most popular clubs in our school, table tennis, that fills his classroom every afternoon from January through March. And perhaps most importantly to me, he's served as the 8th grade class advisor and coordinates our annual excursion to Gettysburg and Hershey, which will embark once again in just two days from now. We're ready, right, Bob? Yes, we are. Thank you, Bob. On behalf of Hillsborough Middle School, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize you as our Teacher of the Year for 2012.
Congratulations again, Bob. Next, we have Ms. Jenkins, who will introduce her Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lisa Fra.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Schiff, members of the board, and those who are present. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to some and to all of you to say that our Teacher of the Year is Lisa Freel. Lisa Freel is completing her 12th year of teaching. She doesn't look it at all, right? She began her teaching career at Amsterdam Elementary School as a maternity leave. However, she was only at Amsterdam from September until the end of October, and then came to Sunnymead in November of that same year, and Sunnymead has been her home ever since. While at Sunnymead, Lisa has taught kindergarten, 1st grade, ASI, and currently, she is a TP teacher. When asked what she loves most about teaching, Lisa said, "There is nothing better than witnessing children begin to read for the first time." I have had the distinct pleasure of watching Lisa teach students to read for the past eight years, and I must say, it is an awesome experience. Lisa has a very special way of making her students feel comfortable and safe to take risks. Lisa, these are some quotes from some of your parents. One parent said, "I was very impressed with the structure she has in her classroom." Another parent says, "There's a lot of learning, but obvious fun and enjoyment is being had in her class. It almost made me wish I could step back into time and be in school again." And one last quote, "She's great at motivating the kids to learn and behave kindly towards one another." Takes a very special person, and that's you. Lisa has been teaching TP for the past two years, and I must say that her TP Tigers love and adore her as well. Because of you, our TP Tigers have learned to roar and to soar. Lisa, we applaud you for your commitment and dedication to our students and their families, and it has been an honor to have you as Sunnymead's 2012 Teacher of the Year. Thanks for all you do, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Lisa. And another Lisa I'd like to call up, Lisa Heisel, Principal of Triangle School, who will introduce her Teacher of the Year, Renee Myers.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Renee Myers, who is very shy, so I will keep my remarks very short. Ms. Myers is completing her 16th year at Triangle School. She looks like she just graduated, but she has been with us since she graduated from college. Mr. Vulpie actually stole my thunder, because I was going to share that the parents were really the overwhelming nominees of Ms. Myers. I received six different nominations for Ms. Myers from parents in her current class, which was exceptional. When you walk into her classroom, you just know that learning is going on. I happened to go in on Friday morning, and the kids were working, and they were doing such a beautiful job, and she and I were standing in the back of the room chatting about something, and I said to the students, "What do you think? Do you all want to stay in 3rd grade so you can stay with Ms. Myers?" And every single one of them said, "Yes, please." So for children to want to remain in the same class, I think that's a really exceptional nomination for the teacher. I cannot say enough as to what else she does. If you've ever been to a Drop Everything in Dance at Triangle School on a beautiful sunny day, you will see her 3rd graders teaching everyone how to do Sid Cotten Eye Joe. That's the Friday dance, so it is an exciting experience. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce her to you, and thank her for teaching at Triangle School.
Thank you, Renee. Congratulations again. Mr. Micah, Principal of Woodburn Elementary School, will introduce Victoria Freeman.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. It's my pleasure to introduce Woodburn's Teacher of the Year, Vicki Fryman. I've chosen to read a poem tonight because I believe the author had Vicki in mind when he or she wrote it. "In Good Hands," it's called. "In the hands of a gifted teacher, a classroom is a magical place. In the hands of a gifted teacher, there's a smile on each child's face. In the hands of a gifted teacher, creative energy is everywhere. In the hands of a gifted teacher, there's a catalyst who genuinely cares. In the hands of a gifted teacher, desire and wonder is awakened. In the hands of a gifted teacher, the educational agenda is shaken. In the hands of a gifted teacher, self-management skills are modeled. In the hands of a gifted teacher, the best of reality is bottled. In the hands of a gifted teacher, gifts and talents are refined. And in the hands of a gifted teacher, the willed future is designed." And Vicki, that poem was wrote about you, and I thank you so much for everything.
Congratulations, Vicki. And finally, Principal of our high school, Ms. Karen Bingard, will introduce Cynthia
Good evening, Dr. Schiff, members of the board. It is my great pleasure to introduce Ms. Cynthia Sobrera, who has been on quite a ride over the past few months. Her journey began when not one, but two teachers separately nominated her to be Hillsborough High School Teacher of the Year. In addition, not one student, but her entire Period 4, 5, Spanish 4 class, wrote a letter of support for her selection. All nominations from the high school were reviewed by a committee consisting of former Teachers of the Year, at which point, Ms. Sobrera was selected as this year's Honoree. Following that, she was selected from the Teachers of the Year at the district schools, all of whom you've just heard about, which is certainly a very, very fine crop of educators, at which point she was named the District Teacher of the Year. From there, Ms. Sobrera was invited to apply for the next level of consideration, where she has been honored as the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. And she absolutely deserves it, and let me tell you why. Cynthia Sobrera has been a Spanish teacher in Hillsborough Township Public Schools for 14 years and for a total of 25 years in education. Currently, she teaches Spanish 4 and AP Spanish, and she advises the Spanish Honor Society. I have had the distinct pleasure of knowing Ms. Sobrera since 2000, working with her in assorted capacities during my years at Hillsborough High School. When Ms. Sobrera came to the high school from the middle school, I was a vice principal. Because of her amazing teaching and classroom management skills, I have to tell you, I was of no use to her whatsoever, since she was already a master teacher. For a period of time, I also served as the interim world language supervisor. Again, I did nothing for her. As a matter of fact, she handled most of the questions for the department, which I was very thankful for, because my background frankly is in English, not Spanish, French, German, Latin, or Italian. Finally, as Principal of the high school, the most I can offer this amazing teacher is all of my support, for the recognition she so rightfully deserves. Beyond that, she really does not need much from me, since she truly has it all under control. Since her colleagues and students nominated Ms. Sobrera, the best way to describe her is to quote their words of tribute. Mr. Fernando Vera, HHS Spanish teacher and someone mentored by Ms. Sobrera when he was a novice teacher, stated, "Her ability to teach at the AP level is clear, not only by how well her students do on a test that is very difficult, but by how her students react to her teaching and their enjoyment of the course. Many former students of mine have told me that they find Cindy's teaching style refreshing and effective. She challenges them to read, write, and converse in Spanish every day, and they're better language learners for having interacted in her class." To demonstrate how well Cindy teaches, one of the best compliments that Mr. Vera can pass along about her is that people do not realize that she is not a native speaker of the language. That is how effectively she communicates in Spanish. In most situations, one can tell right away whether or not the person is a native speaker, but several AP students have been shocked to learn that she is not. Her departmental colleague, Blanca Varela, said, "She has used her content expertise in developing curriculum for higher levels of Spanish. Her classes are enlivened by her use of technologies in the classroom. Her interpersonal skills enable her to develop a good rapport with her students and colleagues." And her students, who truly have the voices that count, to this most exceptional educator, say, "When I walk into her room, there is an aura of welcome and acceptance." You can take the rudest, most flippant kids in the class, and she will turn them into the students who are always striving for an A. She sees them through. She has a warm spirit and willingness to make everyone want to be a better student, and that is what makes a teacher real and honorable. Finally, from my own perspective as her principal, I can add that Cindy Sobrera is a true professional and a positive force in her classroom and the school. She is very worthy of the honor of High School Teacher of the Year, certainly of District Teacher of the Year, and absolutely of County Teacher of the Year, and Hillsborough High School is lucky to call her our own."
Congratulations, Cynthia. Now to finish up our Teacher of the Year, our principal from Woods Road School, Ms. Jody Howe, will now introduce her Teacher of the Year, Alyssa Green.
Good evening. On behalf of the Woods Road School community, I'm happy to announce Alyssa Green as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Green has been a 4th grade teacher since 2003. She is a dynamic, enthusiastic teacher whose dedication to our students has been a powerful force in making a difference in the lives of our students. Mrs. Green takes great pride in what she does. She expects each student to give their personal best in every endeavor, and she expects no less of herself. Mrs. Green consistently demonstrates the use of sound instructional techniques grounded in well-defined learning objectives. She is considered one of our technology gurus and guides and supports her colleagues with our new technology initiative. Each student that arrives at Mrs. Green's classroom door has a unique and intriguing, yet incomplete, story. She knows just how to read each child's story and recognize the remarkable opportunity to help author their own story. Mrs. Green sets an example for all at Woods Road School and exemplifies of what makes our school an extraordinary place to learn and work. Congratulations, Mrs. Green.
Congratulations, Alyssa. Let's give one more big round of applause for all of our Teachers of the Year. And now I'd like to begin our ceremony to recognize our retirees, and I've been working with my calculator to actually add up how many years of experience we'll be leaving the district this year. 546 years of experience. That's tremendous. And for people to dedicate that much time, the education of the children of this district is nothing less than remarkable. So thank you very much, all of our retirees. First, I'd like to call to the podium, Mary Ann Malady, who will introduce her retiree.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Anne Harris to come on up to the podium. Mrs. Harris is retiring this year. After 22 years of service to Hillsborough Township Public Schools, Anne is retiring. Anne has meant so many things to so many people, I don't know where to begin or how to honor the esteemed career she has had at Hillsborough. She served us well as a 1st grade teacher, a 2nd grade teacher, ASI teacher, and elementary science resource teacher. At the end of this school year, Anne Harris will walk out of the doors of Amsterdam School to start her new journey. As she marches through the doors, she will not be unattended. She will be accompanied by memories of all the years in her classrooms, both indoor and out. Years of laughter, years of wonder, years filled with experiments, years filled with handmade artifacts, but mostly, years filled with things that move. I'm talking about the crawly things that move. Anne's love of science and the world around her gave her a special dimension to her teaching and to the contribution she made to the children of Hillsborough. She has worked on many projects and initiatives, including sustaining our StarLab program, Going Green, helping to give life to the Buddies for Birds program, Family Science, Outdoor Environmental Center at Aris, the environmental field trips to Duke's Farms, the 4H initiatives, and the Science Room at Amsterdam School, and many, many more. On behalf of the staff of Hillsborough Township Schools, I wish for you, Anne, a retirement that is a discovery of a new kind. We wish you luck on your work for your dissertation and prepare for your work in higher ed. Visit as often as you like. Our doors and our hearts will always be open to you, but not so much those crawly things. Thank you so much for making our lives richer and for touching so many children in so many special ways. You'll be missed.
Now, Mr. Carrigan, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and introducing your retirees
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. On behalf of the entire Aris community, it's my honor to recognize five individuals this evening who have accounted for 138 of those years that Dr. Schiff just mentioned before. In alphabetical order, our first retiree is Ms. Nancy Budd. Following 20 years in a highly successful first career as a registered nurse, Nancy transitioned to her true calling. transitioned to her true calling in 1997. She started out as a health and supplemental instruction teacher in North Plainfield, and following her time there, she came to Aris and has been with us for the last nine and a half years teaching replacement math. For anyone who's worked with Nancy, you immediately know that she is the quintessential professional who gets the job done with excellence. Her impact was never broadcast over the course of the entire building, across the hall, around the building. She always tried to stay under the radar, but nevertheless, the good news leaked out. And in 2010, she was the Otten Road Teacher of the Year. In chatting with Nancy, I know that she plans to do some extensive traveling in her retirement. Aris is proud to have had Ms. Nancy Budd to be a part of its family for the last decade. We know that she always had her students' best interests at heart, and she'll miss that sparkle in her eyes when they finally have that moment of getting it. For that, we're going to miss her. Nancy, thank you for everything, and we wish you well. We now have Mr. Skip Manuelli. Skip is here. Mr. Manuelli has taught his entire 42 years in education in Hillsborough Township Public He began his teaching career at Woodfern Elementary, and after his time there, Skip worked for the next 27 years at the middle school and at HES, most recently here at Aris for the last 10. Funny story that Skip shared is that after working at Hillsborough Middle School for one year in 1975, 1976, due to overcrowding, the 6th graders were, as 6th graders and staff, were taken and moved to HES. They were told that it was only supposed to be temporary, but it lasted 10 years. I know Skip will most miss his colleagues and friends in Hillsborough. He said that he's not going to miss teaching, but that's because he's going to continue his teaching role in the Boy Scouts and as part of the CERT program. In fact, we hope he'll be able to continue to join the Aris CERT team as a special community advisor and liaison. In talking with Skip, I know his focus has always been to roll up his sleeves and make it work for the kids. In fact, Skip shared that it's what we do, because we're teachers. We make it work. For all of this and for so much more, we thank you for your dedication to the students and staff in Hillsborough for these many years. I'd like to also personally thank Skip for always taking time to comment that I'm a Cubs fan and we don't win very often, and he's a Yankees fan, and they do win very often, but we had some good conversations. Thank you, Skip, for everything, for all the memories. Please know you'll be missed. All the best to you and your family in the years ahead. Our next retiree is Ms. Cindy Gabori. Unfortunately, Mrs. Gabori could not be here tonight. After working for 16 years in business, Mrs. Gabori decided to go back to school and earn her college degree. After graduating summa cum laude from Keene University, she began her teaching career as a 5th grade language arts teacher in East Brunswick. Interestingly enough, her first day of teaching was actually her daughter's first day of teaching when they began their teaching careers together. Cindy indicates that they spent that first year pretty much mentoring each other. In 1995, Mrs. Gabori began teaching in Hillsborough, starting out in Triangle School as a 4th grade teacher. Later, she moved over to the 5th grade at Triangle Elementary and then made the move to Otten Road when we became the intermediate school. For the last 17 years, Cindy Gabori has taught with passion and conviction and has believed in her heart that all children can learn and find success. Mrs. Gabori plans to do some traveling with her husband and spend some quality time with her six grandchildren. I also understand she's considering coming back to be a sub, which is good, because I've kind of gotten used to seeing her around here. In talking with Cindy, I know that she'll miss everyone and miss everything that is Otten Road Intermediate School. She said that she found it a pleasure teaching in a place that's filled with a spirit of activity, music, learning, and the wonderful children of Hillsborough, who have been such a major part of her life for the last 17 years. She said that she will always be proud to say that for 17 years, she was a member of a creative, caring professionals that make up Hillsborough. Cindy, you'll be missed, and we wish you well. Our next retiree is Mrs. Diane Grabus. Unfortunately, Mrs. Grabus could also not be here this evening. Diane has taught in Hillsborough for her entire 44-year career. Over those 44 years, she taught in grades 4 through 6 at Woodfern Elementary School, Hillsborough Middle School, and Otten Road Intermediate School. In 2004, Aris was proud to have Diane named as its Teacher of the Year. When we talked with Diane and Mr. Carey asked her to shoot him a little blurb detailing her plans for retirement, she sent the following, that she plans to travel, to lose weight, and to read adult novels, but obviously, not the 6th grade literacy curriculum adult novels. That's what she was getting at there. In speaking with Diane, she shared that the things that she'll miss most are the people at work, the children, whom she has grown so fond of. She shared that teaching leads to a new adventure each day. She'll miss those special moments. One special moment that she talked about was back in the 80s, when she was able to get a team visiting Mount Everest to place a banner near its peak that had the Hillsborough Middle School name and logo on it. And I believe that picture's actually still up at the middle school somewhere. Trying not to forget those special moments during her first years of teaching, Diane took the advice of her aunt, who was also an educator at the time. To keep a scrapbook, notes from parents, students, colleagues, she did it, and was amazed to learn that she now has two complete, full scrapbooks that contain those special notes, as well as what she calls a wall of fame of pictures. Diane wants her students to know that they're very special to her, and that they can do anything they put their minds to. She also wanted everyone at Aris to know that they will be thought of very fondly on their first day of school, when she sits on her porch with a cup of coffee, totally stress-free. Diane, we wish you all the best, and we thank you for the memories. Our final retiree is Mrs. Kathy Pearl. I know that Kathy wanted to be here, but simply was unable to do so this evening. Kathy will be completing 25 and a half years of teaching in Hillsborough. Her entire teaching career will have been completed in this township. She began as a 3rd grade teacher at Triangle, then taught 5th grade at Triangle, and then at Woodfern. Following this, Kathy taught grade 6 reach at the Hillsborough Middle School, and then most recently, has taught grades 5 and 6 reach at Aris since 2002. I know the Aris community was very proud to have Kathy represent them as its Teacher of the Year in 2009. Kathy plans on spending time with her family and doing some of the traveling in the near future. Again, on behalf of everyone, we want to say that we will miss you. We wish you all the very best as you move into this new phase of your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Mr. Rocco will now introduce retiree Tom Enos.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Tom Enos. Tom Enos has been a school psychologist with us for 32 years. During that time... During those 32 years, Tom was instrumental in the implementation of our autism program, an autism program that is not only known in town, in the county, in the state, but across the country. And Tom had a big part in developing the reputation of that program as being an outstanding program for all students with autism. Tom has been known as an outstanding and caring school psychologist, who's always focused on the students, was a great colleague and respected member of the faculty. He had great respect for parents and great respect for administrators, and we respected him back. I'd like to thank you, Tom, for your 32 years of service.
Mr. Velpi, principal of HES, will introduce his retiree.
I'd like to introduce Debbie Philippione. Debbie, come on up. For the past 18 years, Debbie Philippione has been both a library assistant and an instructional assistant here in Hillsborough Township. And although she's only been an HES star for this past year, her star shined brightly during her entire time here in Hillsborough Township School District. Before coming to Hillsborough Elementary School, she was at the high school, and prior... Oh, before that, she was a middle school, before that, the high school, before that, all of the elementary schools, and then a long time ago, back at Hillsborough Elementary School. So things kind of come full circle for her. In my school, Mrs. Philippione does a variety of things. She works in a general ed setting with students, she works in self-contained classes, she works in a resource room, and she's also kind of a jack-of-all-trades for me. What most people don't know is Debbie has like this 15-minute time slot in her schedule right now, and I have her come up to the main office, and I'm like, "Debbie, can you make some buttons for the kids?" Or, "Debbie, can you do this?" And Debbie takes everything very seriously and does it with the utmost professionalism. And speaking of taking everything seriously, we recently had a retirement party for her at Hillsborough Elementary School, where a lot of people showed up, and people were like, "You got to distract Debbie. You got to distract her so we can get everybody in the multipurpose room." I'm like, "Oh, this is easy," because Debbie takes everything so seriously. So I told some ridiculous story about two students getting into trouble, and the more absurd I started asking her questions, the more into it she got. And after a brief period of time, they called me down there, and I was like, "Debbie, we have to go into the multipurpose room now, so you can show me where this incident took place, which never actually took place." Debbie, quiet and unassuming as always, but taking everything seriously, came in and was welcomed with people not only from Hillsborough Elementary School, but from her past experiences in Hillsborough. Debbie, at HES, it was short and sweet, but I know you meant a lot to the district, as well as many schools, so congratulations on a job well done for your career.
Congratulations, Debbie. Ms. Karen Binger, principal of Hillsborough High School, will now introduce her retirees.
I am very pleased to share the news about a number of our retirees. Unfortunately, only two of them could be with us this evening. What I'm going to do is go alphabetically, so that about halfway through, you get to meet one of them, and then closer to the end, you get to meet the second one, so that I can maintain your interest for a period of time. Our first retiree is Bernadette Chiselko, who could not be with us this evening. She is a mathematics teacher at Hillsborough High School and will be retiring after 12 years in the district, but over 26 years in education. When I asked her about her plans after retirement, she told me she plans to sleep in, spend time with her grandchildren, and be able to be at the beach in September. I'm not at all jealous about that last one, trust me. I did ask her to provide any messages, or quotes, or thoughts about her experience, and what Mrs. Chiselko shared was that "Today is the best day of my life," but that's a rule for her for every day. "I'm not here for a long time, but I am here for a good time, and live like you are dying." So I think suffice it to say, she is looking forward to retirement and to making the most of every single moment of her time. I'm also pleased to speak on behalf of Anna Josephaka, who is a custodian at Hillsborough High School and has been with us for nine years. Anna actually retired in April and has already returned to Poland, where she has rejoined her family. Our third retiree for this evening is Joanne Bebington Layton, who is a teacher in our English department. Joanne has been with us for 26 years. When I asked her about how many years she's been in education, she said, "Do I really have to tell you, because the answer is 41, counting the years that she taught in Florida." When she, when we discussed what she was going to do after her retirement, she said that she plans to read a book that is not Huckleberry Finn or The Scarlet Letter. And I think possibly, her quote is one of my favorite. She has learned that the highly unlikely is possible, and her favorite quote is from her husband, Sean Layton, who is also an English teacher at our high school, who says, "Hearts don't care about age and circumstances." And I think that's a good lesson for everyone. Terry Messinger is here. So I get to invite her up to join me. And I'm very pleased for Terry to be retiring this year and doing it on her own, because we had a near miss with her last year. She has been a library assistant with us for 24 years, an instructional assistant for one year, and she has just completed, or is about to just complete, her 25th year in education, and her 25th year in the district. After she retires, Terry is going to be spending more time with her family, continuing to spoil her granddaughters, traveling and planning more motorcycle trips with her husband. When asked about her messages, quotes, et cetera, she said she wants to offer a special thank you to all of those involved for giving her the opportunity to complete her 25th year at HHS. And she said, her favorite quote is, "I may not have gone where I intended to go, but I think I've ended up where I needed to be," by Douglas Adams. I couldn't agree with you more, really. Congratulations, Terry. Jackie Puzio is not with us this evening, but she actually retired from Hillsborough High School at the end of last year, after we did this recognition. Jackie was a teacher in our Information and Communication Technology Department. She was in the district for 35 years. As far as her plans after retirement, unfortunately, she recently lost her husband, so her post-retirement plans have changed somewhat drastically, but we do wish her the personal strength needed to deal with her loss and wonderful memories to keep him close. She says, "I loved teaching, and it was not just a job. Every student was important." Our next retiree is Patricia Rozicki. Pat actually started her career at Hammerskilled Middle School, where she taught English, and then an instructional aide in special education at Woodfern, Hillsborough Middle School, Woods Road, Amsterdam, and Hillsborough High School, where she's been for 11 years. She's been in our district for 25 years total, 28 years total in education. And after retiring, she plans to do some traveling, do some subbing, and spend lots of time enjoying life with her amazing family and six incredible grandsons, not a girl in the bunch, which she's actually enjoying enormously. I've seen tons of pictures, and they're all beautiful and wonderful. Her favorite quote is from the song by LeAnn Womack, which says, "And when you get the choice to sit it out or dance, I hope you dance." And I've known Mrs. Rozicki for a long time, and she's danced a lot in our lives, and I wish you nothing but the best of dancing and happiness for your retirement. And Donna Schalkuski, who is also with us. Donna is a teacher in our math department at the high school, where she also teaches our computer science and AP Computer Science courses. And the public knows her very well, although not by face. You know the magic that her fingers do in creating every single Channel 14 slide that scrolls through the township. So we will definitely miss having Donna take care of that for us. She asked if she could close school tomorrow. I think I'm going to... No, suffice it to say. She's been in the district 26 of her 27 years in education, and after retiring, plans to relax and travel. And if I know Donna, there's going to be an awful lot of time at the U.S. Open in her future, probably sometime around August. And her mantra, I would almost go with, is, "Don't stress over the little things, life will go on." And Donna has certainly helped a lot of us not stress over the little things, keep us laughing, and just doing a great job with her kids, and we appreciate everything she's given us all these years, and you will be missed. And my final retiree for the evening also could not be here, this is Cheryl Watkins. Cheryl is a teacher of World History CP at the high school. Although she's only been at the high school for a short period of time, she was actually in the middle school much longer. She's been in the district for 12 years and has been in education for 22 years. After retirement, she plans to enjoy, and she says, her words of wisdom to everyone, "Love life and enjoy." So thank you very much for celebrating these retirees with me this evening. I'm very pleased to wish all of them the very best with their future, and they will all be missed dearly at Hillsborough High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binger. Dr. Travelski, if you would come to the podium, please, and introduce your retirees.
Good evening again. I'm pleased to recognize, I want to retire, actually, two this evening, one who's here with me tonight. Maria Cannon is retiring after 17 years in education. Maria began her career as an elementary school teacher, and then she took several years to raise her family here in Hillsborough. Realizing how difficult that was, she returned to education as an instructional assistant at Hillsborough Middle School. Now, for the past 11 years, Ms. Cannon has provided the one-on-one care, classroom assistance, and academic support to youngsters challenged with some of the most extraordinary physical and cognitive disabilities. But Maria brings an extraordinary patience, compassion, love, and attention for her students. But Maria brings an extraordinary patience, compassion, love, and attention for her students each and every day. Her profound optimism, enthusiasm doesn't merely encourage their success, it drives it forward. Maria and her husband are looking forward to settling into their new home in Cape May, New Jersey. As you know, Hillsborough Middle School will always be open to you, and we expect that your home in Cape May will always be open to us. On behalf of all your friends and the many children and families who have benefited from your professional work, congratulations on your retirement, Maria. One other retiree, Mindy Cohen, couldn't be here this evening. She's retiring after 26 years in education as a teacher of mathematics and academic support at Hillsborough Middle School. Like Maria, Mindy also raised her family here in Hillsborough. As she steps down from teaching, she has a few things planned for her continued work in education. But although Mindy couldn't be here this evening, she wanted to extend her warm appreciation to the Board of Ed for 26 great years teaching in her hometown. And on behalf of Hillsborough Middle School, it's my pleasure to thank her for her dedicated service and commitment to excellence for so many students for over a quarter century. Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, principal of Sunnymead School, would you please come to the podium at this time and introduce your retiree?
Good evening again. I don't know why I have to coax my people up here. She's like, I'm like, we're going to the front where all the other people were. So, good evening. And on behalf of the Sunnymead family, I would like to introduce to you our retiree, Ms. Claudia Slayby. Claudia actually launched her career in Hillsborough as a student teacher at Wood Fern School. In 1980, she was hired as a fourth-grade teacher at Sunnymead School, and Sunnymead has been her home for 32 and a half years. Over the years, Claudia has taught ASI, grades one through four, and has been a classroom teacher for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Her most memorable moments in teaching have been when the light bulb goes off in her kids' -- her students' heads. Seeing a smile on their faces makes her feel proud to know that what she is teaching is getting across to them. I'm sure that is a testament for every teacher. Claudia told me that she will miss her students, her colleagues, and the parents and families of Sunnymead, with whom she's developed meaningful relationships with over the years. However, she also told me that as she transitions into retirement, she is definitely looking forward to relaxing on the beach and in the summers and skiing in the winters. Are you gonna take any of us with you? Claudia, I'm going to close with two of your favorite quotes that you shared with me. You said that one of your favorite quotes was, "Old friends pass away, new friends appear." Claudia, your Sunnymead family and friends want you to know that as new friends appear, we will never disappear. No matter how far you are, if you ever need us, just call our names, and we'll be there. Your second quote happens to be one of my favorites by Dr. Maya Angelo. She says, "Life is not measured by the number of breaths we take, but by the moments that take our breath away." Claudia, we wish you many, many, many breathless moments as you enter the gates of retirement. Thank you for all that you've done. Congratulations and best wishes.
This is Debbie Espinosa, our Director of Transportation. We'll come to the podium at this time and introduce her retirees.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to apologize because due to my short amount of time here, about seven months, I've gotten to know my three wonderful women that drive for us, but not long enough that I would have liked to. I'd like to just say that I have three out of six retiring, so half of my retire -- half of my department is actually retiring this year, with 92 of those hours with the three ladies. So they have put in a lot of hours. Just to say a little bit about bus drivers together before I can just say a few words about each of them, is that these ladies are not only drivers, but they're inspectors, they're caregivers, they're listeners, they're musicians, they're disciplinarians, and they're parents, all in a matter of 45 minutes with having their students on the bus. So they do really care about their kids. They go, they're on the road about seven or eight hours a day. I know after an hour, I'm waiting to get out of the car, and these ladies, one of which drives about 45 minutes to get here and then spends seven hours on the road. So they do do an extraordinary job. They have to have training and certificates, which increases every year with the state laws. They're pushed, they're shoved, they're kicked, they're beaten, they're bitten. They have very, very difficult routes. The reason that they are with us is they are in our small vans, and they do help our children with special needs. And I have parents fighting over them because they're such wonderful women. They know their names, they know their children, they know their birth dates. They are extraordinary at what they do. The first one I'd like to bring up is Linda Hackney. Will she would come on up? Linda is the one that drives the greatest distance here, about 45 minutes on a good day, and then she does have probably our most difficult route in town. And I think the reason she lasts this long is she's got an unbelievable sense of humor and is our lovely southerner with the accent. So when I first came here, Linda was probably the first one I knew her name because she had the southern accent. She's third senior in our department with approximately 27 years, did I get that right? 27 years here at Hillsborough. So she's done an amazing job. I know she'll be missed, and we'd like to thank her for everything. The second one is Annie, Annie Ovath. Is she here? There she is. They're hiding back there. Annie, in the short time I've known her handles in district, she does a lot of our hazardous routes. So when we have the flooding and the lovely weather that we've had here in Hillsborough, she's the one that's out there in that weather, the snow and the ice and the rain and the flooding. So she goes into areas that people don't realize that we go into with a small van, and I'm sure she's seen lots of kids probably come through the system, grow up, go on to college, maybe even some children through them. Annie has been here 28 years, so she's our second senior driver, and she is absolutely extraordinary. I've got phone calls from parents, you know, she's going to be missed. I'd like to thank her for everything she's done for Hillsborough. And last, but definitely not least, is Barbara Majewski. If she could come on up. Barbara is one of our out-of-district drivers as far as the seven months that I've been here. I know she's been doing that for many years. She puts many, many miles on her vehicle, goes to very distant places with these students. She is the most senior person in this department with 37 years, correct? 38? 38? More than that? Oh, that's not the date I got. What was it? How many?
It started in 72.
72? I had 75. Look at that, 40 years. 40 years driving a van, driving a school bus, and I'm sure things have changed tremendously from when she started. But she is definitely a leader. She takes on that responsibility. She's amazing with all the new staff we had come on this year, and she gives everybody inspiration and instruction, and she will definitely be missed. So thank you very much, Barbara. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Espinosa. And our final retiree is, will be introduced by Mr. Jay Micah, principal of Wood Fern Elementary School.
I'd like to start by congratulating you, Amy, on your marriage. Amy recently was married and now goes by Amy Jorley, so congratulations. Amy has spent her entire teaching career at Wood Fern. Throughout this time, she has battled many ailments courageously. In fact, we are here tonight because she is retiring so she can work on her health and spend time with her family. And it is sort of bittersweet to me, I only got to spend a half a year with Amy. It was a great half a year. I wish you the best of luck, Amy, and the front door at Wood Fern will always be open
Thank you very much. And our final recognition is to recognize our board members that shared this status with the board. Here to say a few words about our two board members recognized tonight is our board president, Mr. Tom Kinst.
I'll take it from over here, since I was handing out the gifts. Board of, and I'll make this quick as possible because I see the congratulation case for really the ones who deserve it. Board of Education members' positions may be elected positions, but they are volunteer roles and may be, at times, a thankless job. Regardless of one's perspectives, there is common ground on which board members advocate for the students, district, and community. We'd like to recognize two former board members, Steve Paget, to my left, and Mark Rosenberg, who could not be here today, for their recently completed service on the Hillsborough Board of Education. I'll start with Mark. Mark Rosenberg served on the school board for the past six years, three years as vice president. Mark has been engaged in discussions and debate surrounding a host of educational issues. His voice consistently advocated for a rich curriculum, technology, media centers, teacher training programs, and student achievement. So I can recognize Mark. And Steve. Steve Paget has served on the school board for the past six years and with the last three years as president. Steve has been a passionate advocate for students within the district. His background in chemistry fueled his focus on science and the reach programs. Steve's analytic mind and logical reasoning skills were invaluable to the board when complex issues were considered throughout the years, and we've had our share of complex issues over those years. Steve provided encouragement and support throughout the district and community, including the staff, administration, and homeschool associations, recognizing the importance each played towards student success. I'd like to thank Dr. Paget, and I'd like to present a plaque to Steve as a token of our appreciations.
And just as a final thought to all of the honorees tonight, you not only honor yourselves, but you've honored our students, you've honored your school, you've honored your district, and you've honored your community. So thank you very much for all that you do or have done for the children of Hillsborough. Thank you. I would like to ask the board at this time to take a brief recess so that we can celebrate with our honorees. We have a cake and some cookies and some drinks. So with that, I ask for a five-minute recess?
Please? Yes.
Okay, so be it. We're in recess.
Okay, we're back. We can continue the meeting. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. We have a bunch of good news, but actually what I'm going to do is kind of hopscotch a little bit around on the superintendent's report and introduce one of our students, a Hillsborough High School sophomore who scored 99 on the German national exam. This is quite a remarkable feat and one of many from this young person from the high school. And I'd like our supervisor of world language and ESL, Mr. Enrique Pincay, to introduce that student at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Good evening to everyone, and I would like to thank all the members for giving us the opportunity to recognize this wonderful student. Tonight, I would like to recognize the efforts and talents of a truly gifted young lady, Devon Mason. Please join me. She's currently taking not one, not two, but three languages at Hillsborough High School. And she, as if French, German, and Italian weren't enough, she's also teaching herself Chinese. Tonight, I would like to acknowledge one of her achievements in particular. She scored 99, as Dr. Schiff pointed out, on the German national examination administered to several thousand students across the nation. This accomplishment qualified her for a trip to Germany this summer. After a personal interview with a representative from the New Jersey American Association of Teachers of German, she was awarded the trip, all expenses paid. This is the first time one of our students is rewarded with the trip since the national German examination has been administered in Hillsborough High School. Devon, I would like to present you with this certificate. I'm going to read. The certificate says, "Hillsborough Township Public Schools presents the certificate of outstanding achievement to Devon Mason in recognition for her continued academic accomplishments in the field of world languages." Thank you.
Congratulations. Wonderful accomplishment. At this time, I'd like to ask a committee to come forward, a committee that I've been working with all year called the Visioning Committee. The members of this committee and I meet about once a month to talk about how technology can be effectively integrated and what we believe the future of technology in New Jersey public schools is going to look like. Tonight, we're gonna spend a few minutes sharing with the members of the board and the public our ideas on expanding the student one-to-one pilot. Tonight, we're going to go through an introduction that I'm going to do, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Antounas for some discussion on curriculum. Mr. Rocco is going to talk about social networking. And then, and then Mr. Handler is going to discuss the two different devices that we're going to be looking at this upcoming year, the iPad and the Chromebook. And Lenore Johnson, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, she's actually teaching a graduate course, is gonna be covered by Dr. Antounas on the implications of technology in the area of special education. And then each of our principals from the high school, the middle school, and Mr. Carrigan from ARIS will discuss how the pilots will be looking in each of those buildings. So to begin with, this is our Visioning Committee. It's myself, the Assistant Superintendent, Joel Handler, Director of Technology, Lenore Johnson, our Director of Special Services, Ms. Karen Binger, Principal of our high school, Dr. Trabowski, Principal of our middle school, and Mr. Carey, Principal of ARIS. And we're looking at phasing in the one-to-one pilot over a four-year period of time. This is outlined within our strategic plan that all students in grades five through 12 would have an individual device by the conclusion of our strategic plan, which is a five-year plan. Phase one is where we currently are, and we have, we have pilot programs going on at two, two classes of Algebra I at the high school and one class of Algebra I in seventh grade at the middle school. That's currently going on at this time. Phase two will be for this coming year. We're going to have two teams at ARIS, one team piloting the iPad, one team piloting the Chromebook, as well as one full team at the middle school piloting the iPad. And then 12 courses will be using either the iPad or the Chromebook at the high school. And the principals will provide additional details in a moment. Phase three basically will double the pilot. Those fifth-grade students will move up to sixth grade with their devices, and then we will repeat the pilot in fifth grade. Seventh-grade students will move up to eighth grade, and then we'll repeat the pilot in seventh grade again. And then we will add an additional 10 to 12 courses at the high school for a total of between 22 and 24 courses. And phase four, to begin in 2014, 2015, would be full implementation, meaning all students in grades five through 12 having a one-to-one device. Now, what we're talking about in terms of what we hope to be the outcomes is also how we're going to be training our teachers. We're looking at the device to be an organizational tool for the student. That's one of the lessons learned through the pilot of this year. We are also looking at trying to have this device be an integral part of how we deliver instructional materials. So all of the textbooks would be e-textbooks. The electrical resources that are available will be fully utilized. We're also looking at doing three other things that define highly effective integration of technology. First, globalizing the curriculum, which means breaking down the walls of the classroom and bringing loads of resources from outside the classroom into the classroom. Asynchronous learning, meaning that learning doesn't necessarily always occur at the time and the place that we wish it to occur, that we schedule it, that it can be at a time outside of the school day, in a place outside of the school. And finally, the creation, the collaboration, and the publication of various forms of digital content. And both the iPad and the Chromebook provide multiple ways ways of creating digital content. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Antunes for a discussion on curriculum.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. So for curriculum, the curriculum department's philosophy that curriculum is not, that textbooks are not curriculum will hold true in that technology is also not curriculum. However, technology will be a tool that we utilize more readily, more consistently, to enhance and assist in differentiating the instruction for our students. And while it is not the curriculum, it will assist both the teachers and the students in organizing themselves, in reaching out, as Dr. Schiff indicated, by tearing down the walls with the globalization of the curriculum, allowing the students and the teachers the opportunity to Skype with somebody from China with our elementary world language program, which is having a discussion today with, with Mr. Pincay and some, one of the Chinese teachers. And we were talking about how in another school, that's exactly what this teacher did. And that's what we're hoping to bring to our students with utilization of technology. We will write the curriculum as per the standards, both the Common Core and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. However, in writing that, we'll be utilizing the technology to add links right into the curriculum so that the teachers will be able to click on the link and up will come whatever it is that the curriculum writers, all these great teachers you saw here this evening and some others, will be able to share with the rest of the, the community. It will be online. Teachers will be able to take a look at it. Parents will be able to take a look at it. So while the curriculum is the curriculum, and we don't base our curriculum on the type of device we have or a particular app, it will certainly enhance the instruction that's delivered to our students and assist in differentiating that instruction to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Rocco, social networking?
Thank you very much, Dr. Schiff. A lot of people have heard about social networking. A lot of people understand that there are a couple of different avenues for actually interacting with others through social media, whether it be Twitter, Facebook, or Flickr, or any of those other applications that are available. What we don't realize is that social media has kind of an underworld for educators, and it's a very positive underworld. It's an avenue in which collaboration happens, information is shared. People who don't have the opportunity to traditionally work with each other now get a chance to actually work together. So the bottom line when it comes to the technology we're implementing and the things that are out there for people is for educators to understand that there is a place for them in social media. If we begin the process of engaging in the use of social media in our classrooms, with our professional development, engaging with other educators around the world, we'll learn four things or four things will happen. The first thing is that our learning will expand outside of the schools. Traditional professional development happens within a school, in a district. It doesn't have to happen that way anymore. It can happen outside of the school, outside of the district. The second thing is educators will develop what's called a PLN, Professional Learning Network. And those are the individuals, the educators, that follow you, you follow them. These are people that have common interests. People in your PLN will share resources with you. They'll work with you. They'll collaborate with you. They'll help you out. The next thing that's going to occur with educators using social media with the technology that we are integrating into our schools is that they have access to reading, research, projects, activities, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Some people will say, I don't need all that access. But sometimes in the middle of the night, you want to look something up. Sometimes you can't sleep. Other times, you do your best work at 3:00 in the morning. But it's there all the time for you. And that goes back to what Dr. Schiff was talking about with the asynchronous learning. Anytime, anyplace, anywhere, the learning can happen. It's there for you. And finally, the best part about engaging in social media is the fact that educators can begin to frame their own professional development. What's unique about professional development is often that we silo it. We bring in a subject. We bring in a topic. It doesn't always relate to every individual. Social media allows for educators to begin to personalize their own professional development for educators. It's a great opportunity. It's very exciting, and we're going to have the opportunity for a lot of our administrators to engage in some activities with social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Mr. Handler?
So as part of the pilot, we're looking at two potential different devices. As Dr. Schiff had said earlier, at Auten Road School, we'll be piloting both Chromebooks and iPads. Each team, there'll be two teams at that school, that each team will have a different device so that the entire team will be using one device the entire year. The other team will be using the other device. At the middle school, because it's only one team, we had selected a single device that they'll be using there. And at the high school, we have several teachers who are piloting it. Some of the teachers will be using Chromebooks with their classes. Other teachers will be using iPads with their classes. Each device is unique and has distinct advantages to using it. And the purpose or our hope is we're going to determine from these pilots this year which device truly will meet all, will better meet the needs that we're looking for. So the Chromebooks, for those who aren't familiar with them, it's a completely web-based operating system. It runs the Google Chrome OS, which is pretty much the Google Chrome browser, and that's all it runs. It is extremely fast. It's about eight seconds from being powered off to being on and fully operational. So a student can literally turn it on within 10 seconds, 20 seconds or so, typing their username and password, be completely online. All their information, everything is stored in the cloud. So a nice thing about that is that it's completely interchangeable. So if this, you know, if I want to sit down and log on to this device and I log in, it's my complete environment. Travels with me. If I log off this device and somebody else comes on this device and logs in, there's no data to be transferred and so forth. So it's completely interchangeable, especially when if a device malfunctions, you know, downtime, student literally says, you know, it's not working. I can't turn it on. Literally just hand them another device. They're instantly working. There's no, let me back it up. Let me restore it, that kind of thing. Chromebooks are very new to the market. They just came out last year, and they're growing in leaps and bounds in the educational environment. This is the first school year. They were introduced in the middle of last year. So what we saw was a lot of districts talking about them. But because it was mid-year that they were introduced, there was a lot of hesitation because nobody could budget for them at that point. It was too late. This year, we're hearing a lot of, a lot of news and a lot of discussion about them. So we're excited about that. The second device we're looking at are the iPads. iPads are very popular now. They're very individualized, and everything is app-based on them. So one of the things we're looking at is they're great for working with resources such as, you know, textbooks and, and items like that. We have currently this year about 30 or so students, a little over 30 students, using them in two Algebra I classes, which was based specifically around a certain resource, a certain app that was available that really lent itself to that class. Next year, we're looking to expand that and really look at the iPad as a full device for the entire student, for all their academic needs.
Thank you, Mr. Handler. Implications on special education. Dr. Antunes.
Okay, so as well as all of the enhancements to the curriculum discussed previously, really the things that Lenore put on her slide for special education really goes for all students. All students who need assistance with fine motor development can get it through this, behavior management, all those things. However, she really, when Lenore talks about this, she really focuses on three of the major bullets she emphasizes are typically the organizational aspects of the device for the special, the classified population. The social acceptance of the special population, she says, all of a sudden now the kids are now the cool kids when they have this device. And that does wonders, wonders for their motivation. And the ability for our nonverbal or communication impaired students to quote, find their voice. If anybody heard or was able to see the touched by autism premiere, there's a parent who talked about the fact that once the child got this iPad device or one of the devices, that all of a sudden, the parent had waited all these years to hear her child speak. And while it was a woman's voice for her son, he had a voice. And it was one of the most liberating things. It was so wonderful for her. And those are the, all of these things were emphasized, but those are the things that she often talks about whenever we talk about this one-to-one initiative across the board.
Thank you. Ms. Binger?
At the high school, we're going to be, as Mr. Handler said, we're going to be using the devices with 10 individual teachers who will be using these devices, half of them using iPads, half of them using Chromebooks with one of their courses, actually one of their periods, I should say, not one of their courses. So this basically will allow us to hit a number of content areas, which I'll touch upon in a moment. But it's going to give us 10 teachers this coming year, 10 classes of students, plus the two who are continuing from the current year with the Algebra I CP pilot that we have been doing with the iPads. Now, moving into next year, the curricular areas that we're talking about actually will be pretty diverse. We're looking to have two teachers in English, two teachers in social studies, two in math, who are continuing the iPad pilot from this year, science, two teachers, one teacher in an elective area, one teacher in a world language, and two teachers in special education. And it's noteworthy to point out that one of the special education teachers who will be piloting this will also be working in an in-class resource relationship with one of the social studies teachers who will be piloting this. So they will be using the devices both together, and then the special ed teacher will use the device separately with one of the special education courses. So that should provide us with some interesting information there. We're looking forward to, in making the selections in this way, the diversity of content and the approach that the teachers will use, as well as the diversity in assessing how students of different interest and ability levels respond to things. There's the potential for cross-content applications and as well as the way that things kind of come about in an organic way in, in students using these devices. Dr. Schiff mentioned before asynchronous learning, and high schoolers notoriously have extremely busy schedules. And if they have a device with them, that they can just pop on and access their information that is enormously useful to them to be able to individualize and personalize how they're doing things, as well as to be able to get work done in that 15 minutes while they're waiting for the bus for an away game or in the half-hour dinner break from practice from marching band or the musical. Within the classroom itself, lesson plans, besides the, of course, the content areas, lesson plans will focus on technology, on the applications, but more importantly, the integration into the course and how those, how those devices can be used to add to and add value to what the students are doing in the classroom. We're going to, by all means, encourage the students to use the devices in every possible way. I know that at this point, if you talk to a teenager who has a smartphone, many of them have their calendars, their reminders, their to-do lists, their homework assignments, and all of that listed on their smartphone. They are engaging in emails and, and instant messaging with people constantly, which also has an educational use. They can use Google Docs for cooperative learning experiences and peer editing and things of the like. And they can also select apps, both in the Chromebook and in iPads, that are very personalized to themselves and to how they learn and to what they enjoy. So in the end, really, it gives the students all the tools they need all the time. It lets them work in a comfortable environment, and it hopefully will help to increase communication between the students and the teachers. And down the line, with some good support and training for our staff, I think we will really set the stage to allow kids to use tools that will be very, very valuable to them. And I, for one, am looking forward to this experience at the high school and expanding this pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Trabowski?
Thank you. The pilot, the middle school, as Joel mentioned as well, will involve iPads with one of our seventh-grade teams. A team at the middle school consists of about 120 students and a full complement of teachers from all the curricular areas. So there are two literacy teachers, a math teacher, science, social studies, and a special education teacher that provides support in class resource and then study skills support as well for students. So that entire team will be working collaboratively, and they have a common team planning time as well at the middle school to be able to share and dialogue as they, as they work through the pilot year with the seventh graders. Our focus for their use among students, much as Karen mentioned a moment ago at the high school, very similarly, we expect that this will become part of their daily routine for keeping notes and managing their calendar, keeping assignments together. One of the things we observed amongst the students in the Algebra seventh grade, while they used the device in math, when they left the math classroom, the device was still with them. And they would be taking notes in other classes. Sometimes they would even simply take the device itself. If there was something on the board, they would snap pictures of the board. They would snap pictures of the worksheets, integrate that directly into their note-taking and into their calendar for future assignments. So we anticipate that will become a natural routine for many kids. Research, communication, and collaboration, obviously, the device gives them access to internet resources, the ability to communicate with one another through FaceTime when they're working on projects, and to collaborate across distances in Hillsborough. As Dr. Schiff mentioned, the idea of globalizing the curriculum, creating digital content, and working when it is convenient to them, in sync with their lives, not necessarily in sync with third period at 10:30 in the morning, but when they are tuned in and ready to work in a particular subject area, the device can guide them in the absence of the teacher. And teachers, as we observed with our pilot this year, Mrs. Porowski did a few lessons where she flipped the classroom. She created a brief video herself and some information, posted that up on Edmodo, which is a resource she used, similar to like Facebook for education, if you will. Students, their assignment was to watch the lesson and then enter into dialogue with each other. So there was this whole forum dialogue about the problem and the paths they took to solve it that they had offline. So when they came into school the next day, the discussion was ready to take off. It sort of flipped the homework to the lesson at home, and then they were able to work more problems in class. And then, of course, what we saw with the students as well is that in addition to the apps and resources that the teachers were presenting, kids were just finding resources at lightning speed for all their subject areas. And so we anticipate that students will be searching and finding their own applications from resources from mathematics to online periodic tables, to graphing calculators, to literary resources and so forth, that will benefit them and enhance their studies. And then finally, I wanted to mention eBooks. In addition to e-textbooks that we hope to have with the classes, our librarian, Robyn Rowan, has been very active in developing online resources, eBooks for novels and a lot of our resources in the library as well, so that students will be able to, they can currently now, will be able to even more so, download books, novels directly to their devices from wherever they may be. And they can put it right on, not only from our library, but even from the public library as well. So that should definitely enhance their ability to, to get their assignments done.
Thank you, Dr. Trabowski. Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you. A lot of the aspects of the techno, the one-to-one initiative that Dr. Trabowski talked about will also apply to Auten Road Intermediate School in terms of the collaboration, in terms of the communication, in terms of the integration. It's interesting, from, from the Auten Road perspective, we're going to approach it also as the starting point in terms of where we begin with this. Next year, we'll have one fifth-grade team using the iPads. We'll have one fifth-grade team using the Chromebooks. Our fifth-grade teams run approximately 50 students, so we're going to have 100 students using each device. And they will use it in all aspects. Like I said, the research, the communication, the class notes, the assignments. As an extension of the fifth-grade computer instruction classes that we have, we're also going to focus on age-appropriate uses for technology, etiquette, security, digital citizenship, really laying the foundation for the district's expectations for students to be able to maximize what it is that we're doing with, with this technology. In terms of supporting success, one of the, the key aspects in, in the scheduling of these two teams, again, with the, one with the iPads and one with the Chromebooks, those teachers will have common planning time together. It'll also enhance what their professional learning community will be able to do because they'll have the common time, the math, the literacy, as well as how they're applying these things across. While it's recognized that the two devices will be different, the concept of how to institute and how to integrate certain aspects of the technology would be an interesting way to see how the two teams communicate with one another. The tech support and training, ongoing support, will be available for all of the teachers and as well as any other staff who would like to check this out. In terms of the parent advisory council, one of the things that we'd like to do is invite parents of students on these teams to come to meetings, monthly, bimonthly, as needed, and discuss how they're seeing the applications of this on the home front. The hope is that they've had, they have older brothers and sisters who have gone through Auten Road already. How is their fifth-grade experience? How is their fifth-grade experience different from the older brother or sister? We'd also like to have parents who are not part of these two teams also, so we can sit down and have an open dialogue as to how these devices are impacting the families of Hillsborough. And in terms of professional development, as was stated before, we've got summer ongoing during the school year and linking with schools with similar initiatives. As this becomes, as Mr. Handler said, Chromebooks are becoming more widely used, and obviously iPads are widely used, getting to see how other schools and other districts are also implementing these facets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. I leave you with this last quote from Bill Gates. It actually doesn't talk about technology, it talks about the great teacher. None of the advancements in the classroom can occur without the highest quality of instructors working with the kids. Our purpose tonight was to inform the full board as to what our plans are to expand the pilot moving forward. The board has approved the idea of moving towards a one-to-one environment in grades K through 12. What the board hasn't contemplated is how we would do that, and that was what our purpose was today, to give the board some detail on what that is. We did, the members of the visioning team had an opportunity to present in front of the Education Committee last week, and we had follow-up discussion actually this morning on it, and I would turn it over to maybe the Chair of Education, Estue Anne Lee, for any additional comment.
Yes, I'd like to share with my fellow board members and to the public, because the Education Committee did have a lot more time to absorb these ideas, and we felt that we represented parents of the district in asking a lot of questions of the visioning committee. So as you absorb all of this information, maybe one way of looking at it is that, say, texting for cellphones, it had a lot of value for the hearing impaired and for the speech impaired. So they were, it took to that population like wildfire, and then now look at how everybody texts, and even allows my children to make fun of me because I'm not as fast as they are. So we may not at this point know how technology will flourish and blossom in our school district, but we actually already see some evidence in the pilots. And I think that's why Dr. Schiff and as well as the board, when we talked about our five-year strategic plan, that we had a Phase One and a Phase Two. So this Phase Two, while it is about 10% of the population in the grades that we're targeting, it's because we already have evidence in the pilot, which is the Fuse Algebra program that we had this year. So the Education Committee had a chance to actually see that class live, and we heard from students, I mean, we had to cajole them to talk a little bit because it was first thing in the morning, but they actually told us of how the tool, this new tool, would allow them to organize their day much better, and it allowed for, and they spontaneously used the tool. So for example, it was for algebra, but then they were putting, they were doing their Spanish homework, their vocabulary homework, and they were thinking of this on their own. And we're even concerned after evaluating that, that they might have withdrawal from being so organized, and wouldn't any parent wish that kind of a withdrawal? So I just, having had the chance as the Education Committee to be exposed to the pilots, and you know, we welcome questions from the rest of the board members, and I think that we really asked a lot of questions. We violated our own committee rule, which is to stay within our time parameter, and we were late because we had a lot of questions for them. And we, I think that it would be healthy for parents and people in the district residence to ask questions, because as you ask more questions, we might be able to go through those issues that, and be preventive. So some of the questions we had were, how are you going to utilize the, let's say, if we don't use a particular technology? And so they're already thinking about how they could implement Chromebooks if we all go with iPads. And another reason for having a phase in is that there's so many options. We don't have to have the district buy all of them, and we have to evaluate and see how many families already have these devices, how many families would prefer not having to turn it in because it's already been customized for their students, and the students are now organized. So there's many questions, and I think that's why we're doing this phase in, and we're in Phase Two. There's a lot of, we did already approve the budget, and did you want to talk a little bit about the budget of this?
Sure. Right now, we're looking at an anticipated cost, and these are budget figures, they're not actual figures, we haven't finalized the purchasing, but approximately $340,000 for Phase Two. We anticipate that would be approximately the same cost for Phase Three. And then as we get into full implementation, the board will need to consider whether or not it can afford purchasing or leasing it for all students, or cost sharing, or other options. But one of the advantages of piloting it is we have time to begin to look at that carefully, and to see that the financing does not cause negative impact on the tax rate or negative impact on individual parents.
And I would just also like to add that for Teach for a Day, I had the great experience of being in a class of a student that was non-verbal, as you know, I think as Dr. Intune has mentioned, and the device was very bulky. It really kind of had this physical distance between myself and the student. And here's the remarkable thing. So this bulky device is $7,000 to $14,000, depending on the complexity or the need, and the iPad that replaces it is $700, $800, right?
Not even.
Yes? So...
With the software, yeah, it's about $750.
Right. So total of, say, $800, and now instantly, there's this cool factor and feeling part of the student population, and communicating at a better level. So savings, and also being on the curve, and I just think these are the things that we need to capitalize on.
Thank you. Well, now entertain any questions from the board? Yes.
I'm just a little confused because I'm looking at the new tablets that you guys have. So maybe I missed this part of the presentation. The teachers would have the Chromebooks too and an iPad to communicate, or this is just for the students?
These are for the students, but we need to provide one of the devices for the teachers also, so that they understand what the students are going to be using. So all of our teachers this year have been, we purchased these machines, these Lenovo tablets. These have much, much more capability than either the iPad or the Chromebook. The Chromebook, as Mr. Handler pointed out, is a device without, basically a hard drive. All of the work is in the cloud. The iPad, similar, except some of it is downloaded apps. So there is some qualitative differences within the operating systems.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just, one thing that I appreciate and value is the deliberative and stepwise approach that's going to be taken for this and with assessments as we progress through the different phases, which would include impacts to curriculum, learning, the social aspect among the students and their peers, and also the cost. So as you plan to roll this out, we ask that prior to the beginning of the next phase, that you develop and communicate success criteria, how you're going to evaluate different aspects of this pilot, so that we can report out and then make the proper decisions for the next phase.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
We did have the opportunity to present to the Education Committee, and we made copies for the full board, an implementation plan that discusses a variety of surveys that we're going to be asking the students, the teachers, as well as the parents to go through, based upon the criteria that we're looking at for success. We're also going to be looking at some indicators of student progress as well, student achievement.
Well, I just want to express my appreciation to the board, to the public also, for supporting our movement forward with technology. We're very excited. We have many teachers who have, I've met all of the pilot teachers personally, and I've met with them. Their level of enthusiasm is palpable, and we are ready to begin this very exciting process with our students. Thank you. I'd like to now move on to some additional great news about our students and their achievements. Congratulations to Hillsbor, well, I'm sorry, before I do that, I would like to also thank the members of the visioning team that came out and spent a late night with us. So thank you so much, Dr. Trabowski, Mr. Handler, and Ms. Spinger for your time. And Mr. Kerrigan, I'm sorry, who's filling in for Mr. Kerr, thank you again also. Congratulations to Hillsboro High School senior Srihari Raghavan, who was chosen as one of the 10 Academic All-Stars for 2012 by Courier News. Congratulations. Congratulations also to all eighth-grade German students who entered an essay contest sponsored by the German Information Center in Washington DC in March. It's a pleasure to announce that Emily Silverman won first place for her essay titled, quote, "German-American Friendship," unquote, and Mac Calapatia received honorable mention. Emily's essay will be published in the May edition of German in Class. Congratulations. Also, a congratulation goes out to the high school varsity baseball team for capturing the New Jersey Section Two Group Four Championship on Friday, June 1st, with their six-to-one win over 100 Central. Congratulations to those boys. Congratulations to Alyssa Yilly, an eighth grader at Hillsboro Middle School, who won, quote, "best creative entry" for a poem she submitted to the annual middle school writing competition for Holocaust and Genocide Studies at Raritan Valley Community College. Alyssa's work will be displayed at the 29th Annual Learning Through Experience Workshop at the college. Congratulations, Alyssa. I'm pleased to announce that two of our Hillsboro Middle School teachers received the award for Outstanding Cooperating Teachers this year. Mrs. Deborah Perowski, who Dr. Trabowski mentioned, was our pilot teacher at the middle school for the Fuse program, received the award from the Education Honor Society, Capa Delta Pi, at the College of New Jersey for her work with Alexa Lindenberg, who was her student teacher in mathematics. And by the way, Alexa, I believe, has now accepted an appointment with us and will be joining our teaching team. Also, Mr. Scott Rourke received the award from the School of Education at Monmouth University for his work with Chase Barbieri, who did his student teaching in health and physical education. Congratulations to both of our outstanding teachers. And that's all the good news that I have, very good news, and I appreciate the community and the board's patience as we went through all of our presentations this evening, good news, and recognition of honorees. And with that, I turn it over to our president.
Well, we had a lot to celebrate, so, all part of a nice, so we'll move to the approval of the minutes. We'll start with the May 21st, 2012 regular meeting, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Haas for noting for us that we want to acknowledge in the minutes Navy Lieutenant Christopher E. Moscow, who lost his life in Afghanistan. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes. So moved?
Second.
Second? Okay, so moved by Mrs. Haas and Mrs. Lee seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions?
Second.
Okay, the motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the May 21st executive session.
So moved.
Okay, so Mr. Pulseford moved and Mrs. Haas seconded. Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
I think I have to abstain, I came late. I might have to abstain because I came late.
Okay.
Mine is long.
Abstain.
Please.
And the motion passes. Okay. Would like to move to new business. Do we have any new business from the public? Please state name and address, and for new business, we'll take it under consideration. We may not have a response right here now.
Hello, my name is Marissa Sladek, and I live at 681 Dover Court, Unit E, in Hillsboro. I want to start by first thanking you for implementing the iPads. I have a child who has a communication impairment, and he has been able to benefit from the iPads. However, what I come to you before is not for that at all. It is for clarification on your harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy. What I'm trying to have is examples specifically of what you feel would be bullying, and what you feel would be a code of conduct issue, more specifically within the elementary school setting. I should have, you should have received a letter that I sent to you dated May 31st. Dr. Schiff, it was personally addressed to you. I am waiting, seven days later, and I'm still waiting for a response. Within that letter, I asked for a meeting, a meeting to be held before the end of the school year. The end of the school year is next week. I'm still waiting for a response, and I'm still waiting for that meeting. What I'm asking is, like I said, for clarification. I'm asking for my son's situation to be rectified. My child's safety is first and foremost my responsibility, and as I entrust you from the moment he steps on the bus till the moment he comes home from the bus, to also ensure that he has, he is safe within that school time period. He's not feeling that way. On a final note, I have 133 signatures on a petition that I had put on change.org. One of those happens to be Renee Zamle. I also am thanking my friend Donna Mazzio, who has also signed. I'm asking you for clarification on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy. I'm asking for help for my six-year-old. My six-year-old autistic child should not be coming home in tears every day, and he is. I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sladek. Let me first address the, your first concern about a timely response from me. I did receive your letter. I referred it to Mr. Rocco, who is our anti-bullying coordinator, who I believe had an opportunity to contact you and hopefully speak with you and somewhat about this. However, it's clear that you still have questions that need answers, and I'd be more than happy to spend time with you and to address those questions directly. So I'll be in contact with you tomorrow.
I understand what you're saying. I do want to speak to you, and I would like to speak to somebody before the 27th, which was when the appointment was. This needs to be taken care of before the end of the school year.
I will speak with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There, Ms. Sladek, you asked the question about a definition for HIB. This is actually something that causes a great deal of frustration for a lot of us who have to enforce the new anti-bullying law. The definition, the legal definition of bullying, is not necessarily consistent with the common understanding of what bullying is. We have two standards that must be reached. The first standard is that it has to have a substantial disruption, and if that standard is met, we also have a second standard, which means it has to involve a protected class. So managing both of those standards is not necessarily the equivalent of what one would say, hey, that sounds like bullying. Why isn't that kid being disciplined? That sounds like bullying. Well, under the HIB statute, it's very clear what that definition is, but at times, it is different than what a com- But at times, it is different than what a common understanding of it, because if it doesn't reach the substantial disruption standard or the protected class standard, it is not bullying in the sense of what is defined in the law. However, we also have a code of conduct, and that was what you brought up, which allows us to discipline children for misbehavior. And although it may not be accounted for as bullying, what we really want to do is label it less and make sure we change the behavior more. So whatever the misbehavior is of the student, whether it falls into one category or the other, our expectation is that our administrative team is working to discipline appropriately, minimize the behavior to all extent, and make sure that your child, as well as other children in the district, have a, are in a bully-free, happy, learning environment.
For lack of a better term, my child coming home telling me that his breath smells like diarrhea from this particular child, and this being done on a continual basis while he has autism, and it's my understanding, as per the state law, has an effect of insulting or demeaning any student or group of students, creates a hostile environment for the child, and interferes with a student's education, is my understanding that that does. When my child comes home in tears every single day and asks me to pick him up from school, that very much does interfere with his day.
No one on this dais would disagree with you, that your child should not be coming home all upset and have rude comments being made to them. You would get no disagreement from us up here. And again, I'd be happy to talk with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jane Stats. I live at Devonshire Court here in Hillsboro, and I'm also a math teacher here at Hillsboro High School. I am concerned about the elimination of non-college prep, formerly called standard courses in the mathematics and English departments. We have been informed that this is a requirement of the state. However, other similar school districts have two or more levels of college prep. I have addressed my concerns to all levels of administration in the Hillsboro School District, and I've made suggestions, and I now appeal to you, the Board of Education. Alarmingly, one of two scenarios or a combination thereof has resulted. A greater number of students are unable to meet the requirements of college prep courses in spite of their hard work, and they are failing. The other scenario is that teachers are compassionately addressing the needs of struggling students by lowering their standards. This serves as a hindrance to the progress of the whole class. Consequently, the standards of the college prep courses have ironically decreased, resulting in even more students not being properly prepared for college. Special education students do have the recourse to drop down to skills classes, which are significantly lower than the now-defunct standards-level classes. Regular education students cannot take skills classes, so they are resigned to failing or they have resorted to becoming unnecessarily classified so that they can take the skills classes. So some students who had previously taken standard-level courses are now taking skills courses, which again, are lower than the standard-level courses. And in light of the school goal to improve special education students' math scores on the HESPA, this seems counterproductive. I propose that we have two levels of CP, a lower level and a higher level. Students at both levels will be held to high expectations and will exercise critical thinking skills. Both levels would still satisfy the common core standards and still prepare the students for college. Perhaps also, there could be a safety net type of class, much like the Science Department's Geophysical Science CP course. Such a court, such a class could be for those students who barely passed Algebra I or who started out geometry struggling mightily. On a related note, I taught standard geometry, and I have had many students succeed in college and beyond, including some that have been hired as teachers in our district. In closing then, I would like our district to look closely at the curriculum and how best to serve the needs of all of its students while still following the state's mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate those comments as well. We will be looking at this and discussing it further in Education Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other new business from the public, do we have new business from the board? Mrs. Lay?
Nobody else? Yeah. Thank you very much for that information, and we will put it on the Education Committee agenda. Yeah, so this is new business that I'd like to share with the board. There is a workshop in Highland Park, and it's on Monday, June 25th, from 1:00 to 3:30. I'll send an email to the full board. And it's to help us think about ways to save energy for the school district. And what impressed me was that the email that went out included several people in Hillsboro. So somehow, through the Teach Program, through some involvement, there's Mr. Eckert, who's received the invitation as well, and our electrician at the high school. And just so you understand, that it's not just us that is getting involved in looking at energy. There are two or three members from the Franklin Board of Education and the Mount Olive, as well as Netcon. It's all around the state, and I'm just thrilled to see that, because the Teach Pilot, hopefully will, actually not hopefully, I understand that they're working on a report and they're just trying to get it right so that they can present it to Dr. Schiff. But once we get some results, we'll be able to evaluate it as a board and consider it throughout the district. And going to these workshops will help us to have a better understanding of what programs are out there on the state level.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, I have one item of new business. Thank you for each of your input feedback with regard to an upcoming workshop for the board. Looks like we have concurrence for all board members to attend on the alternate Mondays in July, so July 16th and 23rd. One day we will focus on district goals, and on the other Monday, we will focus on board goals. So that would include self-evaluation and then goals specifically for the board, both as an entity, as individuals. So, look forward to that. Okay, moving on. Do we want to do committee reports for education?
We did have, we did have an Ed Committee meeting last week. That's right. On the, and between, we did have a meeting this morning that we won't be reporting on now, but certainly, we can report on the meeting from last week, which was the review...
Actually, we'll wait until next week.
Can I throw out some new business yet?
Yeah. No, we can still do new business. Mrs. Haas?
Actually, I'll be really brief. I just wanted to indicate that both Dana and I attended the senior awards at the high school. These were donated awards for the most part, and awards raised by our teachers in some cases for our graduating seniors. And what I want to raise to the public is that $258,000 worth of awards were given out that night to very deserving kids. And it was also mentioned at this award ceremony that our kids who are going on to college had earned additionally $9 million worth of scholarships towards their college educations. So, that's something to be extraordinarily proud of. So, yay to our students, and yay to the high school for doing a great job in terms of preparing all of this and having a wonderful ceremony for the kids. I also want to mention that I attended the Somerset County School Board Association Spring Meeting, which was all about teacher evaluations. And I only have a 14-page PowerPoint to share about that, but given the lateness of the hour, I think I'll just email it to all of you. And, there was one other thing. There was also a State Board of Education meeting this past week on Wednesday, at which new regulations that were proposed by Commissioner Searf regarding charter schools were discussed by the State Board, and the place apparently was overwhelmed by people from the Educational Law Center, Save Our Schools, Garden State Coalition of Schools, all of whom expressed great concern about the unilateral decision to change the regulations affecting charter. And in some cases, it was various speakers' opinion that these new regulations were actually contrary to the legislation that is in existence. So, watch for that issue, because it will be continued and it will be interesting. One of the things was that the new regulations would allow virtual charter schools, whereas there is nothing in the law that would indicate that virtual schools are acceptable. So, keep your eye open for that. Thank you.
Actually, I have some, another piece of new business this past week was the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, of which Mrs. Haas is not only a member, she is now the president. So, we look forward to it.
Congratulations.
So, we'll move forward with committee reports. We've had one committee meeting before this meeting. It was an Education Committee. Would you like to report on that now, or do you want to roll it in with the, with next meeting? Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Would you like to move to the action agenda?
Thank you. I ask for the board's approval of the following motions under the Education section of the agenda. The approval of professional travel-related expenses. I ask that we hold on A2. We'll need an executive meeting prior to this in order to act on it. A3, motion to submit the summer school application for summer enrichment programs, also submitting the application for the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, and approve the shared service agreement between the Somerset County Library System and the Hillsboro Township Public Schools for next year. Approve and submit the fiscal year 2012 NCLB amendment, and approve the overnight trip to Rutgers for their Rutgers University Model UN program. Accept the local professional development plan, and approve the professional development school network articulation agreement between the College of New Jersey and Hillsboro Township Public School for next year. So, A1 through A9, with the exception of A2.
So, I'd like to entertain a motion to, for the board to approve items A1 and A3 through A9. Mrs. Lay, would you like to have the honors?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's a group.
Mr. Gillette? Moved, and do I have a second?
It's only 10 o'clock.
Okay. Mrs. Lay. Okay, any discussion for any of these items? Okay, Mrs. Haas?
I have to abstain from two items, but can we just do that with one roll call and I'll just abstain?
Sure. We can do that? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood. Okay. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes, on everything except for A5 and A8, on which I abstain.
That's something new. You do that too? I like it.
Well, in the interest of Congress.
Yep.
And just to explain, I was involved in both of those items, so I'm abstaining.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Soisan?
Yes.
And Ms. McKens?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration on the following recommendations that I'm making in the area of human resources. The retirements and resignation as listed, leave of absences, revised leaves of absences, revised long-term substitute, revised lunch aid salaries for 2012, 2013, and approve the transfer in assignments as listed, and approve the appointments of teachers, long-term subs, computer technician, custodian, coaches, as well as the readiness, emergency management for school, the REMS grant positions, substitutes. And motion to approve the summer work salaries for 2012, approve the summer enrichment stipends for 2012, and approve the summer athletic camp stipends.
I'd like to entertain a motion to, for the board to accept items, or to approve items B1 through B10. Mr. Pulsifer?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board accept those items as listed.
Okay. Any, a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes. May I ask a question? When we discuss the increase in the substitute pay, is that reflected in here or is that at another meeting?
September 1st.
Ah, okay.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Haas?
May I? I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the transfers and the changes of assignment. Scott, would you be able to explain the procedure by which people are able to change their assignments? Is this something that, are jobs posted and then people apply to them?
Depending on what...
Or is this generated by the administration?
Depending on what the position is. If you're changing within the school grade level, we put it on because then that ties in with payroll, with what accounts that they're taking that out of. So, it's not truly a vacancy when it's coming through, but for example, we hired three new Spanish teachers at the elementary school. We posted those positions because they're new positions. However, we had teachers that had rights to those positions when we cut the positions back two years ago. So, they took those positions, which created vacancies, which were then posted as a result of that. That's an example of why we would post, because we've moved somebody out of one certification area into another that's district-wide and not in that building.
Are these salaries different from what they were?
No. They would be the same salary.
Okay.
It's the same person who's on the same place on the guide.
Right.
Yeah, that would change.
Just moving to a different spot.
Location.
And with some of the new positions that were created, no difference?
No, if it's, if it's a person that's already been employed by us and is on the guide, whatever their salary is, it doesn't change with the position that they're going to.
I understand that, but I'm saying, were these jobs posted where people from outside could also apply, or did they have first priority?
No, they've been online. We've had a ton of job postings over the last, I'm going to say probably four months. We've been up and down, up and down, updating as people have retired, as people have moved, those type of things, resigned.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mahmood. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes, for everything except for B76. I have to abstain from that one, too.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes, I'm abstaining from B777. 7.7.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Soisan?
Yes.
And Mr. McKens?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following agenda items under the area of operations. The approval of line item transfers, accept the donations from Amsterdam School and Home Association for $600. We express our appreciation to Amsterdam HSA. Also, Stop &amp; Shop and A-Hold Financial Services also gave $500 to Amsterdam School for doing well. And one of our students, they're a first grader, won a writing contest there. Very nice job. We also received an anonymous donation for $5,000. This was someone who was, who participated and watched the Touch on Autism, Touch by Autism Program, and felt so compelled to make a significant donation to the program. So, we are very appreciative of this very generous donation. Also, I ask for your consideration to approve the renewal agreement with Aramark, the renewal agreement with our garbage disposal services, and to award the contract for the local government energy audit and approve local government energy audit program and grant resolution. This process will kick-start the energy audit process that we would like to complete this summer.
Okay. So, I'd like to entertain a motion for the board to approve items C1 through C5? So moved. A second? Second. All right. Greg and Chris. Gotcha. Okay, discussion?
I'm sorry, we only get once a year to do this, so, but for C4, I know that we award garbage contracts based on the price, pricing, and I just wanted to ask if they were good at recycling. The very little that they recycle, but are they good at it?
We've had, Ms. Lay, we've had no complaints, so I could say that they are good at it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Haas?
I have a question about one of the line item transfers. There seemed to be a money that was put in to pay for a long-term substitute who was going on paid leave. So, we are substituting for a substitute? How does that happen? How does that happen?
We'll get the name of the person, we're just going to find the name and, and explain.
I don't need the name.
Yeah.
It's the situation.
Yeah, the situation. Not, we're not going to share the name with you, we're just going to research the situation for a second.
Oh, well, okay.
We can, we can, no, there's more, there's more that we can discuss. With regard to the, the different ones, can you explain which ones have gone out to bid, and through the bidding process, and then also, I would like it, if you can provide information specifically for the, the energy audit, and the level of grants and reimbursement that are entailed with that, please?
Sure. The, are you talking about the bid for the garbage disposal?
The ones in general.
Okay. Dear, we did go out to bid for the garbage disposal last year. We, we have a three-year renewal agreement that we possibly can, the board can approve. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve that first-year renewal. That particular firm, Premier Garbage Disposal, came in lowest, and the chart that we provided with you in attachment C4 shows the difference in, in the bidding process, and how much lower they were than the next lowest bidder. As far as the Aramark contract, once again, we did go out to bid for that, they won, and that this would be the, I believe, year two of a three-year renewal. So next year, we'll go out to bid, and that increase, which was budgeted for, is 2% we put into that increase. And finally, as far as the local energy audit, and approve the local energy audit, we would get reimbursed for this audit. The only problem with that is, we would have to lay out the cash or the, the payment to the, the folks that are going to do the energy audit for us, prior to us actually receiving the money. So the board would have to lay out the money, and then ultimately, we'd reimburse the process with that, it's just a lengthy process for reimbursement. But those energy audits, when we look at them, are going to be very helpful for us in terms of what we can and can't do as a school district.
Am I understanding for that reimbursement, is that what the price that was bid upon, that that would be fully reimbursed, fully reimbursable by the state program?
That is absolutely correct.
And, and are they using the information from the three previous energy audits?
They will be given, yeah, they, they will be given all of the information.
Okay, great. Do we have a response to the, Mrs. Haas's question?
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
That is to pay for the long-term sub for an employee who was out on leave, the way I'm looking at that.
I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that is to pay for the long-term sub for an employee who is on medical leave.
Okay, so we have a contract on the long-term sub.
And an employee went out on medical leave, and the way I'm seeing this listed, is that those funds would pay for the person to replace her on leave.
No, I understand that, but that's like a third substitute for the same position.
I think Mrs. Haas thinks that we're getting a sub for the long-term sub, based upon the way it was written in the memo, I think the wording is just.
It's not a sub for a sub. That substitute is replacing the current employee.
Got it. Okay. It was just poorly worded. Not what it says in the memo, but okay.
Verbiage, poor verbiage noted. Okay.
Let her hear it in any case. A little pathetic.
Okay, any other, any other discussion for items C1 through 5? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Okay, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Soisan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
I've submitted for the board to review the informational items, including enrollments for May, and the fire and crisis drills for the district. Suspensions are in the attachment.
All right. Moving on to old business, any old business from the public? Okay, seen none from the board?
From the board.
Okay, I have, I have a couple items. One is with regard to the charter school application for the IT charter school. Both Dr. Schiff with, with another superintendent submitted a letter. I submitted a letter on behalf of the board. We've received a letter from, from Acting Commissioner Surf's office that they have received it. And then Assemblyman Jack Chirelli also forwarded a copy of a letter that Assemblyman Jack Chirelli, Assemblywoman Donna Simon, and State Senator Kip Bateman signed jointly with regard to the opposition to this one specifically, and, and a general opposition to charter schools for higher-performing districts, noting that for, for struggling or low-performing districts, charter schools are more appropriate. Okay. And then the other item is with regard to the New Jersey School Boards Association Assembly. All the motions that were presented passed, the, the writing of November was clarified to be specifically for that. And the additional piece, and it was an amendment that was provided at the meeting, at the, at the convention, was that if the assembly, if a law is passed and it is deemed to be unconstitutional, while that's going on, there was a, an amendment that was made to actually have the New Jersey School Boards act in a more proactive or active manner in which they would file a complaint to the, to the, to that constitutional ruling board on behalf of all school districts within, within New Jersey. That's all I have for old business, any other? Anyone else have old business? Okay. All right, so we'd like to move into executive session. So whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Milano?
Hi. I'm Carrie Milano, I'm from Meadowbrook. I'm sorry, I did not hear you say old business, it kind of flew right past me, so I apologize.
Sure, no problem.
I just wanted to acknowledge Otten Road's train derailment simulation that occurred since the last board meeting. It was, as part of this huge process, it really did go very well. So thank you to all of those CERT members who put their time in, and everybody who was involved. It, it was, for the first time, thinking about moving 1,100 kids two miles, it was fantastic. So, thank you, Mr. Rocker.
Thank you, Mrs. Milano. Okay. So, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act. Resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset, and State of New Jersey as follows. One, the following matters to be discussed are student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or HIB. And two, the matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
And just to clarify, we anticipate being in executive for approximately 10 minutes, the board will reconvene in public session, and action will be taken on item A2 only.
I would like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Some move.
And seconded?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so. Motion passes. Okay, we're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Soisan?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A2, to approve the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation list as submitted.
Some of.
Second, okay, so. By Ms. Haley, seconded by Mrs. Lay. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
See.
Ms. Soisan?
We.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Yah.
Now, the motion passes. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
And, all in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstentions? We are adjourned. Until next time. Thank you.